Judge, you have the floor.
Thank you, Judge. I guess is Thomas coming up on this one? Or and Thomas, I don't have a whole lot of questions for you. I want to, you know, thank everybody for being here. And I do want to give an opportunity to speak a little bit about, I guess, the vendor and the process. But first, let me just confirm with you, Thomas. This is on as a discretionary exemption to competitive bidding, which is allowed under state law. It's also on as the execution of a contract that I understand will be, if authorized, will be negotiated between the vendor, purchasing, and either the lawyers or someone that oversees that. Is that accurate?
So the way this caption reads is it allows for the purchasing agent to execute a purchase order. So there are some areas that we can still work with that vendor to stipulate based on the conversation here. And we can take that back and develop a contract.
Okay. So again, I think you clarified the question. It was really related to the way that it is posted, and that is authorizing the purchasing agent to negotiate and execute a contract. So let me ask Thomas to step aside for a minute. There was a lot of discussion about the proposed vendor. And I think Mr. Smith is here from the from Civic Government Solutions. Could you come up, Mr. Smith? Because a lot of folks testified today, as a matter of fact, in terms of what they believe your intent is or your methodology is. I want to, first of all, say that, you know, I came across your information through Harris County. I understand Harris County is still contemplating this as a way really strictly to get more people engaged in the process of voting, right? So that is the first step. Obviously, you've got to get them registered to vote. And so if you could talk a little bit, I know you've got probably some very specific proprietary information. I'm not asking you to share that. But you heard the testimony this morning. There was a lot of testimony with respect to this being a partisan effort. That was never my intent. I understand that is not your intent. I wanted to see if you could talk a little bit about, I guess, the approach your company takes with, first of all, identifying new voters who have moved and how that is really taking out the prism, the funnel of partisanship. We're just looking at getting more people engaged in the process. So if you could just state your name for the record and maybe talk a little bit about that.
Yes, Commissioner. I am the infamous Jeremy Smith. Sorry for subjecting everyone to my podcast quotes. The general idea of this program is taking affirmative outreach aimed at all citizens. And our goal is to make it very easy for all valid citizens to be able to register and to be able to vote. I learned that firsthand, serving overseas, having trouble with both me and my soldiers on remote bases, having extreme difficulty, especially with the state of Texas, in being able to cast our ballots. The method that was most effective and that we worked on improving is through the mail because it's the most universally accessible technique to reach people, especially those who do not have a driver's license or who may be working remotely on oil fields or oil derricks, who's serving overseas, students who are perhaps going to school out of state or out of the county. And so you can use different methods to reach people through the mail, including through the U.S. Postal Service Change of Address Database, as well as public records like licensing bureaus. So every new licensed food handler in Bear County, cosmetologists, barbers, licensed teachers, licensed nurses, licensed lawyers, all of these things are matters of state record. And essentially, by combining those records to which the county and the state have unique access to, you can actually identify people when they are brand newly, like arrived, and assist them at that moment. And it turns out that that is the most effective way to help them register and then increase vote share. It works extremely well in local elections, primary elections, and general elections as well. And it's something we've been advocating, not merely with all 254 counties in Texas, but also with other agencies around the country. So we do it with cities, counties, Secretaries of State. And we've worked with Secretaries of State, for example, in Alabama, and Oklahoma, and Idaho. So the notion that this is a partisan effort, I think, is misunderstood. I understand where people are coming from. I have a personal view on who I would like to win the federal election. That is not to say that the contracts that we undertake with governments are in any way partisan. And the contracts always stipulate that this must be nonpartisan for every eligible person who arises in any of those data sets. And we work closely with those county government services to make sure that that looks that way.
Okay. So despite, again, what your personal background is or maybe some other affiliated organization or company, the company you're now presenting as a potential vendor with the county is looking at voter registration from a purely neutral standpoint. You could be registering, you don't know whether they're Republican, Democrat, independent. You're just looking at folks who have maybe a high mobility rate that maybe need some assistance in getting registered or re-registered. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner. They might, all we might know about them is that they are a new assigned soldier at Fort San Houston. And that's the only, but that they have now an address, other information that we can kind of match to previous voter files to determine citizenship, other things like that. And then also to just kind of reassure everyone that it's not actually possible to register non-citizens to vote. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about this. The state, the Secretary of State actually has a system called TEAM to which counties submit the information. You heard from Administrator Callahan earlier when it's in that pending, approved, and verified status. The state then compares the driver's license or the last four of your social that you place on those forms to the databases that they maintain with the DMV and the federal government. And that is actually where verification is checked. And the counties and VDRs and other organizations are actually prohibited by the AG and the Secretary of State from trying to make any determination about someone's eligibility on either felony status or citizenship.
Yeah, and that's a good point. Very similar to maybe an organization we alluded to earlier who's set up at a community event. That person who is assisting with voter registration does not make a determination at that point whether or not somebody is here in this country legally. It's up to the person who fills out the form to state that. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner. And on the form in Texas, there's two sections. There's the boxes that you must check that say that you are a citizen, that you are 18 years of age or older. And then you must sign the oath, the affidavit at the bottom under penalty of law, that you are, in fact, a citizen, that you are old enough to vote, that you are a resident, and that you are not currently serving on probation for felony conviction.
Okay. And then you also probably heard some testimony about the multiple groups and multiple mailers. And, you know, we all get plenty of mailers in particularly close to election time. It sounded like our elections administrator made it clear that there was a checks and balances, in her words, in terms of if there's a duplicative form, if there's, you know, something in error or raises a red flag. There is a continuum of back and forth between her office, the Secretary of State's office, to, in fact, determine whether or not it's simply duplicative or maybe a, an error, user error, so to speak. Is that what your understanding is?
Yes, Commissioner. There's a few different things going on there. The most common source of error is exactly what we're all talking about. People standing, you've seen them at the mall, at a movie theater, at a restaurant, at some sort of community event or fair. And they're, you're walking by and they say, hey, are you registered to vote? Make sure your address is up to date. If you're all hesitant, fill this out. More than half of all those paper forms that the counties receive from VDRs are duplicate records. It is Jeremy Smith registering to vote at the same address again. But it's Jeremy Smith who filled that out and perhaps forgot or was just worried or double checking. But then you have another 12 and 1/2% of those forms are illegible because of handwriting. And so, you know, Administrator Callahan referred to the errors that occur. Yes, there can be like, you know, a fat finger typo error sort of mistake. But also, sometimes it's very hard to read someone's handwriting. And so by sending the forms to the voters in this way, you actually reduce that error rate. You accelerate the speed at which the county can process them. And you reduce the waste in the voter file maintenance. Because by correcting the record faster, you essentially, you remove the concerns about ineligible voters who may have left the county or who may have passed away and are now deceased. And so one of the ways we try to improve that typically results in about a 6% to 8% improvement of that knowable portion of the file of people who are no longer eligible to vote. And we try to help counties clean that up as rapidly as possible.
Okay. And I guess your reference to other counties, are you currently working with other counties? Or have you in the past worked with other counties, specifically in Texas or anywhere else?
Yes, Commissioner. We were actually, I was asked by the Elections Division of the Secretary of State to create CGS back in, I believe, 2019 to assist them on all of these kinds of voter file maintenance procedures. That's why we created it that way. In its bylaws, it is nonpartisan. In its mission, it is nonpartisan. And all of its contracts are nonpartisan, very specifically to address these concerns about public resources going to this purpose. In that, we have, the Secretary of State then recommended that we try to reach out and work more directly with the counties as the best approach. And so we reached out to all 254 counties, starting, I believe, in 2023. We are in different stages of negotiation with about 40 counties in Texas and numerous agencies across the country and are actively working on several here at this time for this election. And we've been speaking, I believe, with Administrator Callahan's office since about mid-2023 in various ways, on different ideas and subjects. And it was really, I believe, you know, moved forward sometime earlier this spring when we started to see traction with other counties in Texas.
Okay. One of the other statements that was, I guess, made as a fact, but I think is needs a clarification, is that under the election code, a county is prohibited from using resources to mail ballot ballots or voter registration cards. That is, my understanding, a misrepresentation of the election code. Would you agree?
Yes, Commissioner. Our legal review does not find that to be the case. I obviously defer to your county attorneys. The, it is not, there are specific officials who cannot send request forms for vote by mail. And those are actually very specifically labeled. And, for example, all of you in the Commissioners Court could do that.
Could or could not?
You could. So if you wanted to send a form to every resident of Bear County, you could. The Elections Administrator is not allowed to. But the county, it's only the Elections Administrator who is forbidden. So our legal review is that it is absolutely legal. And, but I'm not a lawyer, and I absolutely defer to your county attorney.
You know, I guess the easiest way to clarify that is the county, Bear County, does cycle after cycle during elections spend resources on sending mail ballots to those who may be senior citizens, who may be disabled, who may be deployed? That is a statement of fact. Is that your understanding?
You're asking me if the county sends request forms preemptively to seniors?
Not preemptively. I'm just saying we utilize county resources to send out, to pay for those.
And they're made available in various forms. So digital, paper copies that are provided out to various organizations and others. And so really, the goal here is, you know, we talked about the 900 VDRs and everything else that exist in Bear County. And I think that's, it's like a wonderful thing that people are so involved. It is challenging to reach every citizen in a county of this size. And so you typically have political parties who are, you know, they're looking for a particular advantage in an election, understandably. So they're focusing on a subset of voters that they think will support them. Our view is that that leaves out a very large number of people. And actually, a better approach is to start with everyone and affirmatively conduct that. And then that way, it should, you know, it works in the interest of everybody. There are more voters available for candidates for office to speak to. But it also dramatically improves your jury pool roles and a number of other civic services and organizations that the county administers.
Okay. And, you know, I guess the main thing is, I know that there are plenty of different arguments made this morning as to why we shouldn't do this. I want to be clear with you that, I guess, the one thing I wanted to clarify with you is that this is not a partisan effort. You are not looking to register more Democrats or more Republicans or more independents. Is that clear?
That's correct. Just to be clear, we are a private company. Like, our goal would be to do the whole state. And we are very eager and to do that everywhere. And we have reached out to every single county in order to try to enact that over time. We think that it is something that we do that is very valuable, that it is good for society, and that we could make money off of doing more people. So we are, it's, we understand the argument that is made. But the approach here, and that it is in the contract, it is in all of these, like, legal stipulations that it must be nonpartisan. And so we go to great pains to ensure that that is the case because we think that stewarding taxpayer money is like, is a crucial responsibility. And you all are executors of that and overseers of that. But also, the staff who work for you are trying to do this to the best of their ability as well. And we want to respect that and maintain it. So I come from a long background in the U.S. Army and went to West Point. Go Army, Commissioner Moody. And it's sort of ingrained in us the notion that we need to be accountable and maintain integrity to the larger view. So I understand the notion. Yes, I have a personal view of who I want to win. That does not influence the way that a company works.
Yeah, and, you know, I just wanted to make the point, too, that, you know, first of all, we appreciate you being here. Thank you for your service. I did not intentionally, to my colleagues, ask for a busload of anybody to come and show up, particularly Democrats, because then it becomes a partisan issue. This is not a partisan issue from my perspective. This is about democracy with a lowercase d and making sure that people have access. I mean, I'm getting texts as recent as last week from people who say, look, we just moved into the county. We don't understand the process. Do we have to get a driver's license? We went to the driver's license office, and they don't have appointments till January. And so there's, I think, a need for people to somehow have a better, easier way to access the Elections Office, all of the state offices. And this is one way that I think we can do that. And again, it's not up to us to tell them who to vote for or, you know, where to go and join your different civic groups. Those are individual things. Even if they decide to register and not vote, that's not, I hope that's not the case, but that's not for us. We have candidates and parties who are doing that to get people out to vote. This is simply making them eligible, removing that barrier so that they know when it comes time to vote, they can vote. So again, Judge, I know my colleagues have questions about this. I'm going to make a motion to approve the authorization to execute a contract today with CGS.
Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by Commissioner Clay Flores. Commissioner Clay Flores, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'd like to start just by saying that I'm hearing, I'm starting to hear snares in this courtroom. And we've sat here for two hours listening to Citizens to Be Heard, which is your right, and we have been very respectful. So I'm going to ask for the same respect in return for my colleagues. There has been so much false rhetoric spoken here today. I don't know where to start. But first of all, it's been a dog and pony show. It's the continual effort to silence voter suppression and make people intimidated to vote, which is an American right. And a lot of people spoke about illegal aliens, first of all. Migrants look like everyone else in this classroom. They're not from another planet. They're not from Mars. So they are not illegal aliens. And unless people hear...
Hold on, hold on. I'm going to ask for order. Court security, ramp it up. I'm not going to tolerate any outbursts here.
Thank you, Judge.
Clear the room if I have to. Your citizens be heard. Let's respect the diocese police. Proceed, Commissioner Clay Flores.
And I don't see any of you, when I have been volunteering for the last two years, every single Saturday, at the migrant center on San Pedro, to come in and do the worship service. So I am continuously talking to migrants. And none of them are trying to figure out how to vote illegally. They are concerned with getting food and clothes in their bag. We do not control what both parties send out to residents. I know for a fact personally that, including the Republican Party, is sending out things specially targeted to seniors to get them confused about stuff. And when Jackie Calley was here, I thanked her for the checks and balances of our staff at the Elections Department in working with the State Department, working with the Secretary of State. Because even if someone gets something in their mouth asking them to register when they're already registered, even if they go and try to register twice, they can't. That's what checks and balances are for. That's why we spend so much money to make sure that that doesn't happen. And Ken Paxton has been mentioned today. Larry, are we doing anything illegal here where Ken Paxton can sue?
Commissioner, Ken Paxton can sue. But I read through the letter. I found it to be misleading at best.
False rhetoric.
I think so. I checked the sites, and there were, for example, the statement that an item is not a service. If you review that specifically, item is in the County Purchasing Act specifically defined to include a service. That is directly contradictory of what the Attorney General set out. So yes, the Attorney General could sue, but I felt like...
On false basis. Thank you. And may I remind everyone that we live in the state of Texas. And at the state level, it's majority Republican. And they're doing some illegal things that we will continue to fight against, like purging a million people from the voter rolls. Talk about election integrity. The word integrity was used in a statement by the Attorney General regarding our voter rolls and ensure that only eligible voters can vote. And that is exactly what we are trying to pass today and why I was proud to second it, so that we can encourage and make sure that Americans exercise their right to vote and quit being apathetic in letting so many important votes, so many important elections go without voting. So I'm happy to second. Thank you.
Commissioner Moody, or Commissioner Callahan?
Thank you, Judge. I want to thank everyone for coming today. It was good to see many friends. It's good to have a robust discussion. And thank you for the research that's been done. I think it was important for us to have all of the testimony that we did have today. So I did talk to Commissioner Ellis in Harris County. And he indicated that they are not doing it at this moment because they are concerned about the Attorney General. And I think that has to give this Commissioners Court much more pause. And I think that when I look at the Attorney General's statement, Larry, he indicates Texas counties have no statutory authority to print and mail voter registration forms, making the proposal fundamentally illegal.
Sure, certainly. So you have to compare Harris County and the position they're in and Bear County. We have an Elections Administrator. Harris County does not. In Bear County, a Fourth Court of Appeals opinion, Cryer versus Navarro, with the Fourth Court reviewed the Elections Administrator position and determined that Elections Administrator position was an employee of Bear County, although the Elections Administrator may disagree. But that's what the Fourth Court of Opinion, Fourth Court of Appeals determined, and that she carries out the administrative functions of Bear County. And part of those functions include voter registration. That is verbatim from the opinion. Fourth Court of Appeals, the Attorney General may disagree with that opinion, but that's what the opinion says. That is the Fourth Court. It's the law in Bear County. That's what it says.
Did it go to the Texas Supreme Court? Is it going to the Texas Supreme Court?
No. I mean, it's an older opinion. It was when Judge Cindy Taylor Cryer was the county judge.
Okay. So I have Section 276.016 regarding the unlawful solicitation and distribution of application to vote by mail. And it's pretty nuclear, right? So it basically says a public official or election official commits an offense if the official, while acting in an official capacity, knowingly solicits the submission of an application to vote by mail from a person who did not request an application to distributes an application to vote by mail to a person who did not request the application unless the distribution is expressly authorized by another provision of this code, which is an important part because it'll tell you what are those entities in county government that are. You're attesting to the court that Commissioners can do that?
No, I didn't say that. But vote by mail is very different from just registering to vote.
That's true. I apologize. I was reading the application. So...
Very different.
I just want to make sure...
And the opinion that the AG referenced, I want to point this out, Commissioner, because it's very important. The opinion that the AG referenced in the letter, State versus Hollins, that opinion, distinguishable on its face, dealt with applications for ballot by mail. Very restricted. May only be requested by the individual. We are not talking about that. We are talking about applications to register to vote. Not restricted. Available in post offices everywhere. I think we all can, we've seen them everywhere. So two very different circumstances. That is a criminal penalty you're referencing.
Right.
This is not.
Okay. So one of the concerns, I guess, that Harris County probably had was just the rigmarole of getting into a legal battle with the Attorney General, the cost associated with that. What might those costs be to the county?
Unpredictable. But keep in mind, they do not have an Elections Administrator. Those duties were transferred to the tax assessor-collector and to the county clerk. Those are elected offices. And part of that issue was that the court could not interfere with the elected official's duties in Harris County. Here, the Elections Administrator is, by case law, an employee of Bear County. Very distinguishable circumstance.
Okay. So just back up and tell me the statutory ability for the Elections Administrator to do the registration with a empty, I guess, application, if you will, mailing it out. Is there authority for that?
So my understanding in Bear County, the Bear County Elections Administrator, by statute, under the Elections Code 31043, is the voter registrar in Bear County?
It's 31.043?
Correct. Section 1. And under that, as you know, the voter registrar generally has the duty to help increase voter registration throughout the state. By case law, an employee of Bear County. Therefore...
So, you know, there is some conversation, obviously, we've been having. The court's always been supportive of additional staffing for the Elections Administrator to do the things she needed to do, whether it's registration, vote by mail increases, and things of that nature. But was there any new law passed in the last couple of legislative sessions? Because every single session has a new law, an election code, that is, at least on my side of the aisle, more restrictive to voting. Was there anything that is new that would prohibit this particular contract?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'm not an elections law expert. Maybe this gentleman knows, it's his company. I have not reviewed this. Admittedly, I have not reviewed this particular issue, this acquisition. So I don't know. Not to my knowledge, but...
That's fair. We do need elections expertise. But what I would say is, it would be hard for me to push a vote yes when the Attorney General is saying it's illegal. You know, it puts me in the court, I think, in a very difficult circumstance. And I'm just saying, you know, we don't have that information.
Fair point, Commissioner. But the Attorney General did not cite such a law in his letter. And I can almost guarantee you, if he felt there was a law, he certainly would have cited it because he cited everything else. Inaccurately, I would add.
Okay. All right. Well, you know, I'm just looking at it. Texas counties have no, and I know what you mean by the Elections Administrator. But, in any event, okay, so there would...
I think he misconstrues Bear County versus Harris County and the status of each county because we're very different from Harris County.
Understood. All right. All right. Let's go to the purchasing issues because I think those are legitimate concerns. The purchasing issue, you know, it's hard for me, I am a deputy registrar. My family has been registering people for decades. But it's hard, it's hard for me to necessarily say there's a sole source here. I do think that there are, in a competitive bid environment, groups that can do this work. You know, I, I just haven't, and it's not for you, Mr. Smith, to answer, but that's just my own judgment, that there are other groups. And I will say this, in the issue of fairness, you know, you and I would probably have a lovely whiskey session and cigar together about politics. But when it comes to this process with respect to the public feeling it's fair and nonpartisan, you know, the way I, the way I was as an activist is different than the way I am and the way I govern. I have to govern for all the people. And it's very important for the process to be as nonpartisan as possible. And so it seems to me that in the greater good, well-meaning, well-structured setup, whenever there are commentaries that are of a partisan nature, it's apparent company, it's connected, I mean, I have multiple companies, I understand what that means, it just, as some people said, doesn't necessarily pass a smell test. If there were a coalition of groups, you know, perhaps that would make people feel better, that there were maybe more conservative leaning or maybe just nonpartisan in general, that may in fact just make a more trustworthy process. And it is important that people have trust in the way that the county does registration. And so that's, you know, that's a lesson learned, that I think for you, in terms of the way the business that you're in is going to work, those comments are going to come under a lot of scrutiny. And I'm not, I'm not saying that the Republican Party doesn't have their favorites, they do, that they don't have their folks. I'm not saying you're a Democratic hacker or anything. We've never met, I don't know you, I know nothing about your, I haven't listened to these podcasts, but they're available, you're acknowledging them to some extent, we'll just leave it at this, okay? You know, it's, it's of a concern, as someone who has to represent everyone, that this kind of process isn't questioned in this way. So it is, it is difficult for me to support this in light of the sole sourcing and the trust issues. I think it's important that we get this right, not only from a vendor standpoint, but also from a supply chain standpoint, to be able to handle the supply chain that will come to the Elections Department. There's probably a better move to table this and work this out than there is to move this forward, but there is a motion on the floor. I just can't support it as it is today. And I don't know if there's any consideration about tabling it, but I will yield the floor. Thank you, Judge, for the time.
Commissioner Moody?
Well, thank you and appreciate your comments, Commissioner Calvert. I do want to thank everybody who came today to be heard. I think it's important that citizens and elected officials come and make sure that their, their feelings, their concerns are known. I'll just say upfront, I was hoping this item would be pulled. You know, I think there's so many glaring concerns, many of them have been pointed out here today, but here we are. I'm also not a lawyer, but I'm going to try to lay out some cases and highlight some of the points that some of our citizens to be heard have already made and some new points, hopefully, as well. You know, if we circle back to when this item originally passed Commissioners Court, approximately $600,000, I believe the language was "to identify funding and negotiate an agreement with CGS." But what I said at that point, and I still, you know, completely agree today, that it's not the county's role. What we heard from Jackie Callahan earlier today, in her 19 years, this has never been done before. We're on new ground, doing this for the first time against our Elections Administrator's wishes. I think that's an important point to make based on the previous conversation because we're saying that we're in a different situation from Harris County because our Elections Administrator is underneath the Commissioners Court. Well, listen to our Elections Administrator. She doesn't want this to happen and believes it's going to damage the process and potentially cause, you know, issues with backlogs and delays on Election Day. I'll circle back to that. The other thing is taxpayer money. We're now down to $392,000, but it's still $400,000 in taxpayer money that's being spent on, on this item. And again, we heard from our Elections Administrator and from many of our citizens today about just how many times these same audiences are being hit with the exact same message by various groups who are obviously doing a poor job targeting, but, but they're out there hitting these same groups over and over and over again. I would also just mention for the process that the expected return on investment, I'll say investment here, is going to be significantly lower anyway because you have all these other groups. You would agree with that, correct?
No, Commissioner, they're not targeting the same people.
Okay. Well, I would disagree with you because I think from a statistical standpoint, it's very clear, and if you look at your own statistics, you know, obviously with the first mailing, you know, you see the greatest increase and each additional mailing is going to see less of an impact on those audiences. I think that's pretty well accepted.
We're not recommending more than one, Commissioner, just one.
Okay. No, but I'm still saying, because they've already been targeted by other groups, the idea that we're now considering sending another targeting message that is going to have huge overlap with those other groups that have already been targeted by state organizations like Move Texas, Common Sense Texas, Voter Participation Project, there's obviously going to be massive overlap with all those groups.
In all those cases, there'd be zero overlap, Commissioner.
Okay. I would be shocked to see that.
We have 100% full knowledge on that one. I want to reassure you, we reach out to those groups, we maintain relationships to help deconflict and not waste people's money and efforts.
Is that through CivTech or CGS?
All the above. So it'd be, it depends on different elements. So sometimes that's like a direct relationship and sometimes that's just by reading that someone is sending out something and we reach out to them affirmatively to try to avoid wasting anyone's time or money. We agree, you don't want to confuse voters and you don't want to make people feel like they're being put upon through multiple successive mailers suggesting that they might not be registered to vote. That causes confusion and concern.
So CivTech deconflicting with those other national groups and state groups?
We have like an organization, there's groups who basically like gather and share data to help prevent duplication of this work because the public voter files are all, they're all public record. So anybody can download it every week. So every Monday, we're essentially checking the voter files in real time. And then we also reach out to any kind of nonprofit government group or political group and we say, Adam, we understand that you are planning to target some sort of effort in this way. Would you be willing to share your list to help avoid duplication of work?
So I understand from CivTech's standpoint, right? And you are the CEO of CivTech.
That's correct.
And you are the CEO of CGS as well, correct?
Yes, Commissioner.
So from CivTech's standpoint, I obviously understand, you know, you're supporting Democrat candidates, you're supporting Democrat turnout, you don't want to target the same audience twice. How do you deconflict that from CGS? Where's the firewall here?
The firewall is typically between hard side and soft side.
How can you have a firewall?
Hard side and soft side organizations. You're exactly right. All the groups that you just named are 501(c)(3)'s. So those are all easily deconflicted with anything that would be a governmental work.
So how do you do that in practice?
In practice, you maintain the database of the information. You essentially screen it in real time to, so this is a major reason why this hasn't been done before, is cloud computing has really just changed the dynamic of how cheap and easy it is to do these kinds of large-scale data projects. And Commissioner Calvert, the main thing about the voter registration work is, we are, we're proposing a data solution that the implementation can be done in any which way the county sees fit. Mail is the most effective, but we've provided research on a number of other methods, but it's the, it's that proprietary dataset that is what makes it valuable. And the fact that we're looking at people who no one else is able to see because we work through all of these public records systems. So that kind of volume of information is then, you essentially, every single effort to outreach to someone that either succeeds or fails or they say, I'm not interested, that gets logged and then it prevents duplication of work. And I understand the point you're making, Commissioner. CivTech is 80% nonprofit revenue that is not political at all. We have, most of our political candidate clients are also nonpartisan because most races in America are nonpartisan. There are partisan clients as well. And of course, we have a team that markets, you know, towards partisan clients. But the, the approach that we take is that our, our goal is to reduce the total cost and to find any partner who's interested in registering voters and essentially share the load. So by, there might be a small county or a small precinct who's doing that. That's why the bid cost goes down is because we're letting you know, hey, these people actually got taken care of. So you don't need to try the same thing and waste your money.
I understand what you're saying. I just don't understand how you're going to separate those two databases. You're obviously deconflicting on one side and yet on the other side, they, they can't be shared.
That's right. They can't, you're correct. Partisan efforts would not be eligible for deconflicting that way.
Okay. So that's requiring a lot of... I would go as far as to say, trust and confidence in, in any of your clients, to know that those are separated when you're talking about counties. Can you speak to, you said you reached out to all 254 counties. How many counties are you working with today?
We're in, I think, different stages of negotiation, about 40 in Texas.
How many counties do you have deals with?
Four.
Which counties?
Dallas, Travis, Harris is like on hold. It's been voted on and approved, but, you know, we understand the interests there. And we're looking at whether or not, our recommendation is to do this on a monthly or quarterly basis regularly because it's particularly effective for local elections. And there's always increased interest around major federal elections, understandably. But the real goal here is to make it a, there's a regular voter file maintenance problem, which is just that people are fluid in the area. So people are moving, they're dying, they're turning 18, they are, you know, going on deployments, coming back. All of that affects voter eligibility statuses. And so we are trying to make it really easy to keep up so that there can be lower voter file maintenance costs.
So those are the, is Bear the fourth county?
Yeah. Bear would be the fourth that we are interested in right now. I would say it's like a late-stage stage, but we don't have a deal or anything in place.
I think it's fair to point out for the record that those are the only four counties in the state of Texas that are traditionally blue counties over the last several election cycles.
I think there are several dozen more, obviously, that would be like, you know...
On, on certain elections, but those are the four most Democrat counties in the state of Texas.
Like, I understand the point you're making, Commissioner.
It's just a statement.
It's just volume. It's cheaper and better economics of scale.
Okay. Well, again, even, I said this before, but I'll circle back and just say, even if the process was designed to be nonpartisan, and even if everyone could wrap their head around that, when you are operating in the most Democrat counties, then you're going to have a partisan impact. I, I think that everyone would agree with that, that clearly you're going to have a partisan impact. And that's obviously why you have a lot of voters, a lot of constituents here today who are concerned about it. And so I'm just making that point. So even if the process is designed as nonpartisan, the outcome and the impact will have a partisan impact. Let me move on, though, from, from discussions about politics and partisanship. Let's talk some more about process and some of the things that we heard today. You know, because some more has come to light and I think the process has been pretty chaotic and non-standard in my opinion. Let's talk about process. So, and Patty, I'd ask you to also be involved in this discussion. I want to understand, you know, how we got, well, first of all, how did we get from $600,000 to $392,000? Who's negotiating this contract on behalf of Bear County?
Who do you want to ask that question of, Commissioner?
I don't know who has the answer. Whoever has the answer.
So the original dollar amount that the court authorized back in July was substantially more. If you look at the backup here, let me take a step back. Back in July, they were estimating about 250,000 individuals. This first tranche is 210. So this has been reduced based on some of the data that Mr. Smith has provided. Additionally, the, the way the, it was initially proposed back in July, the initial term was around 450K and then there was about 126,000 quarterly thereafter. That is not set out in this, in this particular provision. We'd have to come back and get that authority from court to do anything after the initial term. So that's where the dollar values differ, Commissioner.
So the number was revised down based on a smaller audience size?
That and the quarterly thereafter. The quarterly, the quarterly efforts thereafter.
Quarterly after was removed? Okay. So again, help me, who's, from CGS's standpoint, who are you negotiating with at the county on this contract? Actually, I'll correct myself, this purchase order, because we're going to go there next.
You know, it like, it's essentially, like, we are talking to, I believe, most of the members of your staffs and the county administration, purchasing office, like, sort of just taking any questions and requests for input at this time. I'm not totally clear on where the authority or decision lies and like defer to follow the county's guidance.
Okay. Well, then I'll ask county staff. And Patty, can you say, do you own this in your office? I've seen paper with your signature on it, but I know when we discussed this on Friday, you did not have some answers around where this stood. Is your office owning the, the purchase order?
Yes. So, excuse me, after award, Commissioners Court award, once it's awarded, then the purchasing department processes a purchase order. Then we, before we issue the purchase order, we add any terms or any specific conditions or provisions as a note.
Okay. So you're the point of contact or no?
Correct.
Okay. So who was, so before, before this item came to court back in July, I believe, so it already came with CGS. So were you talking to CGS before July?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, how did CGS show up on our agenda in July?
That was initiated through Commissioners Court, sir, not staff-driven.
I'm sorry?
That was initiated through the Commissioners Court.
Okay. Okay. So it was initiated through Commissioner Rodriguez's office. So ultimately, we went from last court session and, what's the language, "to identify funding and negotiate an agreement." Patty, is an agreement normally a contract?
No, sir. A contract can be a purchase order as well. So it could be a purchase order or an agreement drawn up by the attorney, the DA's office.
Okay. So help me with the, the purchase order here. What, $400,000 seems like a really high number for a purchase order. Is that correct?
Not necessarily, sir. The purchase order, what it does, it'll allow the award to go through. The agreement usually has renewal or additional provisions or renewal terms. For example, five-year or initial two-year with one-year renewal. So my understanding of this service was a one-time or the need was the one-time basis not a renewal. There's no renewals included.
Not sure if I fully grasped that. So how did we get from a contract to a purchase order?
I wasn't involved in the initial conversations, but when I was approached, I was approached with a purchase order. The agenda was to be created to issue a purchase order to, to the vendor.
Okay. Well, it's my understanding that there's, there's issues with purchase orders because, forgive the paraphrase, but writing a blank check, there's no contractual language to hold, you know, an organization accountable, much less so than in a contract.
No, I disagree with that, but I'll defer to you, Larry.
Well, then I'll defer to our legal counsel on that. Larry, would you mind weighing in on contract versus purchase order?
I think a purchase order is used when the, for certain purchases, yes, but for a, like a architect or engineering, when you have terms and conditions, a purchase order is not appropriate because you can't, can't really do anything with a purchase order. I can't take that to court and do anything with that.
Yeah. So with a contract, you have a lot more control and recourse in a contract that you don't have in a purchase order, correct?
Yes. You can draft in... Yes, that you can draft in certain controls in a contract, which it sounds like that the court may want in this case, which we can, we can adjust that. I think, I don't see any issue with that, Commissioner, moving forward. And the agenda item appears to be drafted in a way that allows the purchasing agent to sign off on that agreement, if that's what the court wants to do.
Okay, well, I would definitely say that a contract would be in order, in my opinion.
It would be my recommendation to do that.
All right, so let's go back to the agreement as it stands today. So 200,000 mailings, what is your current estimated increase in vote total?
You should see about 75,000 more voters this year, depending on the exact timeline of how this, you know, there's not a lot of time remaining until the voter registration deadline. And then you would see an increase in your local elections of about 3% to 4%.
Okay, I was trying to do the math. I'm not sure where the 75,000 came from. I assume that there would be approximately another 20,000 voters in the November election, based on the audience that you were mailing.
I think there's a difference in terms of defining voters here as like votes, and then you're referring to registrants. So people on the file, there would be another 20,000 to 25,000 more people on the file.
Okay, we're just talking about votes, based on expected uptick in votes.
That's right.
Well, I don't know. If you do the math, if my math's correct, because I think you brought up a different stat there, but it looked like about $70 per vote in terms of lift. That's the case. Again, it seems really overpriced versus, I mean, I know in my very expensive primary campaign, we spent about $15 per vote total. In our general election race, that may only be $2 or $3 per vote. But we're talking about putting $400,000 into see what in terms of total votes?
I think $7, not 70.
Okay, well, I'll confirm my math, but I usually trust it.
Just the 400,000 divided by 75,000?
Let's talk a little bit about sole source, all right? So, because this is the agenda item today, too, right? Looking for an exception to the bidding process to look at others. And we just heard from our elections administrator, and we heard from a lot of citizens who talked about the mailings that they received. So clearly, there are a lot of organizations and groups, including the parties, who are out there doing this exact same thing. Now, who has made the request for a sole source here and why?
Who has made the requests?
Yeah, for an exception, instead of bidding this.
So again, just to recap, back in July, Commissioner's Court, through your process, authorized staff to negotiate an agreement. What we've done is we went back to look at that question, whether or not this qualified as a sole source. CSG has provided documentation based on the proprietary databases that they do qualify for that, and they've attested to that. So after court authorized in July, we did ask CSG to determine, to issue a statement whether or not they qualify, and they have attested to that.
Has CGS provided their database? Or was it the three-pager?
Not at this moment.
So, Mr. Smith, the database that CGS has, how's that different than Civtech's database?
They're functionally the same. It's my, it's just very simply, you mentioned this earlier, it's a subsidiary arrangement, simply so that the intellectual property of like my ideas and work can more easily thread, and it was requested by the Texas Secretary of State in order to create a nonpartisan legal vehicle to do contracts with for the voter file maintenance work.
And can you just confirm again, then, with the learnings from your government nonpartisan work, how does that not flow through to Civtech?
I wouldn't say that there's like any learnings. We're talking about taking public records, contacting those individuals. They decide to fill the form out, mail it back to your office directly. They never touch, talk to us, they never contact us. We don't talk to them. So there's not some sort of like private conversation or data that we ever have access to that would go anywhere.
You don't have tracking?
We have tracking. So there's tracking on the mail that's provided to the county in the form of, did the voter receive a letter? Did they mail it back? When did the county receive it? And then we check if they're on the file. All of that is public records. There's no, there's nothing that's like some sort of secretive element.
Okay, but you're getting it correctly, because you're tracking the mail for us, right?
We are. It's, but all of that is contractual to provide, it's really to provide oversight on all that. But we provide, I mean, we provided a research memo to your office at your office's request on hundreds of RCTs that have been done with government agencies and nonprofits and foundations.
Okay, so circling back to where we talked about those other organizations, how is CGS operating differently than MoveTexas, Common Sense Texas, Voter Participation Project, or the Democrat Party in Texas?
They're, I mean, so those are all just legally distinct entities who, the general method that's used by both political parties and camps is to purchase credit card data from TransUnion, Experian, Equifax. The challenge there that both parties run into is that that data is, they don't have opt-ins. So they're essentially buying very old data, pre-privacy laws. That is, that's why you have a lot of erroneous mailings. You'll see on those mailings, they probably say current resident. It doesn't really know who lives there. They're just trying a bunch of homes and particular zip codes. This is generally a less efficient approach than looking for actual signals of somebody who moved here within the past few weeks and sending them a letter. And the letter that we've actually proposed as a design is recommending lots of county services. So it's welcoming someone and making them aware of the differences in this county versus where they may have lived somewhere else, including voter registration.
So is it actually access to specific data that, in your mind, makes you proprietary versus how you pulled those data sets together?
I'd say it's, yeah, I think it's, there's skill around the data. It's really like grit around data collection. It's tens of thousands of public records that have to be gathered, ingested. So there's data engineering and data science work that has to be done at that level. And then again, it's meticulous kind of scientific approach to what is the best way to now help somebody get registered of, you know, in different subsegments. So I would argue it's a little bit of a combination of what you see from kind of the military background there. It's the combination of logistics with data work and technical work.
Okay, are you going to share your database with Bear County?
Yes, that's part of the, the county would have access to all of that data and information. We would be then matching it against the county's localized voter registration record on the day that it goes out to make sure that it's not incorrectly including anybody who's already registered to vote. And then the county would maintain that and be able to measure at the very end how many people got registered as a result of this, how many votes broken down by precinct, both electoral and commissioner's precinct. And you can, you know, run any kind of analysis that you'd like to on it.
Okay, I did want to circle back to something Commissioner Calvert mentioned around Harris County. What's your take on Harris County? Because you mentioned them as one of your four counties, and our understanding is they have tabled that or they have canceled that contract at this point? Or they're no longer moving forward?
I believe, yes. It could be that. It could be delayed until after the election. We've heard both. So I think that our goal is to solve a long-term problem. If there is interest right now, because we are coming up on a voter registration deadline, we are happy to like move faster to get it done. But the long-term benefit here is to reduce the like incorrect records on the voter file, to make it so that many, many more people can vote, and to make it much easier for every citizen to be able to cast their ballot, should they choose to. So that's my interest. And the way I do, the way we approach that is to work with any localized group who is interested in that as well. So we take a very long-term view on this, and like I said, we've been working with Secretary of State on this since 2019. We're making steady strides. We're pleased about the progress so far. The test results have been very, very good. That doing it from something like a Commissioner's Court, it produces a more positive effect in people's perception of elections. Because getting something from their county that says, welcome to Bear County, we'd like to tell you about some Bear County services, and we want to make sure that you get registered to vote, and we want to welcome you. People in surveys say that that makes them feel much better than if they get partisan mail, telling them what to think or who to vote for on any various number of issues. So everything we've done so far seems to suggest that this is a better approach, which is why we are recommending and encouraging it.
Okay, but Commissioner Ellis, and I'll quote, pulled the item from Harris County Commissioner's Court and said, quote, "to improve it, especially finding the effective use of county resources," unquote.
Commissioner, can I respond to that?
Sure.
Because I spoke with Commissioner Ellis this morning. We served together in the legislature. So the distinction he made, first of all, he put a pause on that, tabled that item before this threat of a lawsuit from the AG. So it had nothing to do with that. But what he told me this morning was, the distinction was, and Larry kind of alluded to this, was that in Harris County, they do not have an elections administrator. Elections are run through the tax assessor collector's office, an elected person. And I think he was getting signals, either directly or indirectly, that that elected person was not going to be cooperative in moving this forward. So he told me, and you're free to check with him if you want, if I was in Bear County's shoes, I would move forward, because you have a different situation. I know you stated earlier that our EA, elections administrator, is against this. I did not hear that testimony this morning. What I heard was she said she would need additional resources to comply. Happy to go back and check the record. So different circumstances, but that's why it was kind of put on hold, according to Commissioner Ellis this morning.
Well, appreciate the background. I very much understand the difference between Harris County and Bear County and their situation. But the fact remains, at the present time, they're not going forward. And whether that's the Commissioner's Court, or whether that's the tax assessor collector, or the county clerk, that is unwilling to take on the risk or liability that comes with such a contract. And so, I mean, that stands to day. And, you know, I don't know whether Jackie said specifically that she's opposed to it. I think most people can read through the lies at this point and understand that she has serious concerns and why, you know, this hasn't ever been brought forward before. Let me, we already talked about purchase order contract with Larry. Let me just reiterate a few things on the election side. So Jackie, Jackie this morning, obviously, we wish she could have been here. We could have asked her questions directly, because I would ask her that question right now. But she did mention they have a current backlog. She did mention that that's growing. As all these other groups continue to pile on and send these mailings, not only is the backlog growing, but the angry voter that is calling and coming into their office is continuing to escalate. They're getting more and more of that, as this tactic is overused and continues to be used again and again by these outside groups. You know, I know we were trying to do the math earlier, but it's really hard. We don't have all the information about how many voter applications now they're getting per day versus how many they can actually work through with the current staffing that they have. They already have 10 temps. They only have space for four more. So at what point does this become unsustainable at our elections department, between now and Election Day? So I think there's some serious concerns there. We didn't get into it, you know, we didn't have time with Jackie this morning, but there's also, there is a process, right, at the Secretary of State's office to verify voter, voters, based on the information they provide. But all of these processes do take time, whether they're on Jackie's end or on the Secretary of State's side. And a lot of times, I know there's a back and forth where the elections department has to give those individuals 30 days to respond. And then based on their response, they may have to go back out to them again for another 30 days. Well, I mean, we have a national election in less than 60 days. So I think there's some serious timing issues here as we try to go through this process. And I heard you earlier, I know you said that there's safeguards in place to ensure that non-citizens cannot vote. However, we also heard from our governor that there were 6,000 non-citizens on our rolls that were just removed in the last couple of weeks. So it does happen. And, you know, it obviously wasn't the bulk of those million voters, but 6,000 voters is still 6,000 voters. So I think it's important that we remember that. And also just reiterate, over 900 registrars is what Jackie said we have right now in Bear County, working to register voters. We already talked about, has Bear County ever done this before? In 19 years, Jackie said, we've never done this in Bear County. And I still would just make the point that because all these other groups are using the same tactics or similar tactics to the same audiences, our results are probably going to be far less robust than what we expect or what you've seen in previous groups that are potentially untouched by these tactics. So I think we should defer to Jackie on this and not override her. I mean, let me just finish up here. I think we have an item here that, in my opinion, has been rushed. There are a lot of unanswered questions, some of which we've heard from citizens today, some of which we've heard from staff today, on a purchase order that has legal concerns that we obviously need to shift to a contract if we were to go forward. On a sole source exception that, you know, I still don't believe is warranted, I think we've made it clear that there are a lot of different entities that are doing these exact same things. Obviously, you're telling us that your database is different, that it's better, it's the best mousetrap out there. But clearly, how can we know that if we don't go out and put it out for bid and actually look at what else is available in the marketplace? I think it's premature to assume that this should be a sole source contract. It's been polled by the Harris County Commissioner's Court, and obviously, at this time, they wouldn't touch it because of liability issues and concerns that they had. And our elections administrator says, you know, this hasn't been done before. It's going to be a huge headache, and it could cause Election Day issues for Bear County. And as someone mentioned, I believe Commissioner Rodriguez, it further divides our county. This is a very much a partisan divide here that was unnecessary, and I did not want to see. I agree with Commissioner Rodriguez on that. You know, I didn't want to have this division here in this courtroom today. But unfortunately, we are here, and this item does that to our county and to our people. And, you know, we can't ignore the fact that as of 9:00 or 10:00 PM last night, we are facing the threat of a lawsuit. Regardless of different legal opinions on what that stands, we are accepting the fact that if we go forward with this item today, this county will face a lawsuit, almost certainly, then from the AG's office. We're going to do all that for what? I'm a believer, you know, that, you know, first do no harm. First, do no harm. And, you know, to me, this is a waste of taxpayer money, and it creates a huge set of problems for this Commissioner's Court and for our county that are absolutely unnecessary and unneeded right now. And, you know, based on Commissioner Calvert's comments earlier, I'm going to move to table this.
Hold on, hold on. We've got one motion on the floor. We'll take it up, and then we'll take up any other motions after a vote of the motion on the floor. Have you concluded remarks, Commissioner Clay Flores?
First of all, Mr. Smith, you're a veteran from the Army?
Yes, Commissioner.
So I want to thank you. My brother served, retired after 24 years, so go Army. And we talk a lot about supporting small minority-owned, woman-owned, and veteran-owned businesses, and now we have the opportunity to do that. So thank you. And so many of y'all have been talking about this being partisan. Y'all have made it partisan. And may I remind everyone that a whole bunch of veterans are Republicans. So thank you for making sure that we are sending these also to the men and women who are fighting for us overseas. You keep talking about partisan. This has been the most partisan morning I have spent since I've been Commissioner in the last 40 years, with all the Republican rhetoric and partisanship that y'all have been talking about. Mr. Smith, you said you reached out to 40 counties? Mr. Smith, you said you reached out to 40 counties?
Uh, all 254 in Texas, Commissioner.
All 254. So Commissioner Moody, with you emphasizing that the contracts are with the larger counties, the other counties that are majority Republican, they could have reached out and they haven't.
We're still very interested in doing this everywhere.
And so there's been a lot of fake news with so much media here for the dog and pony show. I want to make sure that fake news is not continued. Do not put Jack, words in Jackie Callenan's mouth. She never said she was against this. I met with her, my chief of staff met with her, she's never said she was against this. So let's not put words in her mouth. Thank you.
Yeah, just, just briefly, Judge, and, and I want to just, uh, echo some of what's been said. Look, very few things, uh, here at Commissioner's Court turn into, uh, a partisan fight. I did not intend for this to be a partisan fight when we brought it forward. We simply looked at what Harris County was doing, um, and, and frankly, just looked at how we can do the right thing by not Democrats or Republicans, but, um, our constituents here in Bear County. And that was to make the registration process easier. Um, so I regret that it's, that it's turned into that. I still believe that this is the right thing to do. It's the right thing to do for democracy, it's the right thing to do for our constituents in our community. And we're essentially, you know, I know Commissioner Moody, you feel like this is rushed. I mean, we approved this very item in July, two months ago, um, on a four to one vote. Um, there wasn't a whole lot of, um, discussion about it back then. I don't think much has changed. In fact, I think we've actually drawn back and said, look, we're not going to do an ongoing, uh, process where you, you update the, the, um, voter registration quarterly at this point. Let's give it a try and see if it works. Mr. Smith, you've committed to sharing that information with the county. Um, so we've dialed it back and, and it's a small amount to make sure, uh, people in our community are engaged and informed and have access, uh, to their right to vote. So, um, I, I, I think at this point, a motion to table is, is effectively, uh, the same as killing this because it would not allow enough time for this to get set up. So I'll be against your motion, Commissioner Moody. I know we'll continue to work together moving forward, there's too many important items in our community to not. Um, but I'm going to ask the court, um, to vote against the motion to table and for the negotiation to engage in the contract.
Anything else on this side? Commissioner Moody, Commissioner Calvert?
Well, um, I'll just say, uh, again that, you know, I, I think we absolutely have more important things to, to worry about in this county. Our, you know, we have a budget cycle right now, we're in the next, what, week? Next week, we have a $2.8 billion budget we need to approve. Um, like I said, I, I wish we weren't here, uh, having this debate, but I think it's important and I think a lot of citizens obviously think it's important or they wouldn't be here. And a lot of leaders, elected leaders, party leaders and everything else, I don't think there's anything fake about that. So thank you for being here, having your voices heard. And again, I think everybody can read exactly through what Jackie said today and understand what she meant. Thank you.
Let me weigh in. First, there's, uh, Commissioner Rodriguez has raised a point of order, I'll sustain his point of order, we will take up the motion to table. That needs to be resolved before we then go to the underlying motion made by Commissioner Rodriguez. So there is a motion by Commissioner Moody, second by Commissioner Calvert on a motion to table, the motion that's on the table. Before we do that, let me ask some questions, Mr. Smith. I'll be honest with you, you probably have answered it over and over. And there's been a lot of information, not only from the participation of the public through citizens to be heard, but also through the court, from the dais, from each county commissioner, and, uh, and then from you. So as, as a former judge, attorney, I want to really ask you to please be very succinct in your answers. And so one of the dynamics, I think we all, and I think everybody's conceded in the room, is this is a very partisan issue. So we're probably, in light of the current environment, will never, ever get to some agreed resolution. We need to vote up, we need to vote it down, one or the other. So Mr. Smith, one of the criticisms that is made against you is whether or not, and you've made it very clear, you have personal opinions and positions that you take as a private citizen, correct?
That's correct.
But as a president of CGS who is supposed to do a nonpartisan, please tell me in very short terms, how you can assure the court that your efforts will be nonpartisan?
Yes, Judge. Uh, by fiduciary duty, the bylaws of our organization and its mission statement require us to act in a nonpartisan manner. Every contract we have with federal entities, state entities, local entities requires, uh, that nonpartisan element. We insist on it being there. Every government, after a group that we've worked with insists on it.
So let me, you, you, I, I cut you off because you made that clear. But I think it's a question that Commissioner Moody's asking, I'm asking you. Obviously, you've done many of these efforts in other jurisdictions, other states, other parts of the state of Texas, correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
So how have you assured the community, whether it was partisan one side or partisan the other side? How have you assured them, other than your, just your word? Is there, do you have any processes that would assure? I'd like to understand your processes a little bit more. I think Commissioner Moody made a reference to firewall, that's obviously a situation that law firms or any businesses have, that they can represent two sides so long there's clear disclosure, which apparently there has been today. And then how can you assure that this is a nonpartisan when you're being apparently accused by some in the room that you are partisan, that this is a partisan effort?
Uh, yes, Judge, there are controls in place, uh, when dealing with any type of entity that requires a nonpartisan arrangement. So that'd be 501(c)(3)'s, um, and government agencies, private corporations that we do this with. Uh, there are specific controls that go into place in terms of the databases, uh, who's allowed to access them. The SQL logs, the, the, the technical logs that exist that show what did the data scientist pull is stored and maintained and provided as like evidence of this was correctly done in a nonpartisan manner with no partisan scoping.
So would you swear, would you swear under oath that you're just not chasing Democrat voters?
Absolutely. And, and, uh, we are even more than that, we're, it's, we're a startup, we're looking to like, we, we are trying to expand and create more opportunities for civic engagement. It is in our interest to include more people. Like it is our, in our financial interests and our fiduciary duty to try to get as many people as possible. That includes everyone.
So in regards to the comment that our elections administrator, who's in charge of not only running the elections but also in registering the voters, uh, what can you do more than what she has been charged to do? Help me understand, especially for me and the public, what are you, what are we buying that she can't do or doesn't have the bandwidth or capacity to do at this time?
I think that's the right way to look at it, is it's a capacity issue. It's, there's significant amount that could be done and, and like happy to like support the county in, in looking at this as an alternative, but you could, there are databases and public records to which the county could gain access to and pull them together by the thousands and, uh, do the data engineering work to essentially check, like do these students at the University of Texas, San Antonio, who have just enrolled for this upcoming fall semester, which of them is eligible and which of them are registered to vote? And then that leaves you with a remainder of that student body who is not registered to vote. The same thing for, um, newly licensed hunters, newly licensed fishers, like, uh, like your fishing license that people are applying for. Uh, every one of those is essentially like a public in, interaction with constituent services that can be matched back to the voter file, which is also public record to determine whether or not we have an opportunity to include more people. And so really, it's, it's a capacity issue of the technical knowledge and the staff time to go out, hard, like pull in all this information, match it together and then undertake the, the tracking and the like affirmative outreach.
So my understanding, the universe that you're really looking to increase voter registration are people that are newly registered throughout whatever databases?
That's right.
So you're saying people that register driver's license, people that get a hunting license, people that register at schools, anybody who comes and establishes a residency and the voting requirements, obviously 18 or over, no felonies, citizens, uh, those are the people you're chasing?
Uh, that's correct, including like 18-year-olds who just graduated, who are not going to college, who are entering a trade or a profession or, uh, these things are very challenging to find and these are people who slip through the, the cracks. A lot of these people do not have a driver's license, that's one of the main reasons why they don't show up in existing work with the county.
So how do you rebut the accusation that you're going to be chasing people that are not citizens?
Uh, very specifically, there are some ways in which we know that in advance, but mechanically it is impossible to be certain because if we mail today, if we agree to mail some number of people today, by the time it arrives on Friday or Monday of next week, somebody will have moved and someone new will be in that house and, you know, you could levy that kind of accusation all of the time. What we do is we include a letter that explains like what is, what the purpose of this is and to make sure that people know the eligibility criteria. And then on the form, we highlight the boxes that the voter must check and fill in, uh, with their information and certify that I am a citizen, they have to check that box, they have to check that they're old enough, and then they have to sign the oath and affidavit at the bottom.
So it's an individual responsibility of anybody who registers, if they do not qualify but yet tried to register under your process, that would have to be an individual responsibility? They would have to be charged with a crime if they lied under oath?
They would, they, if they, if they, if, if that was the case, yes, Judge, but it's, it's not just their responsibility, it's also under the National Voter Registration Act and Texas Election Code, it's the responsibility of the Secretary of State. So there's, yes, the voter swearing under oath that they are a citizen when they are not, that would, that would be inappropriate, that would be against the law.
Do you have, do you do anything to facilitate people who would be registering that might not be able to because of some kind of impediment? Do y'all get involved in that or is it just y'all send out all that to this new pool of universe that you're trying to register?
Are you asking if we check their eligibility as an impediment?
Yes.
Yes, as much as possible. It is not, there's no way to guarantee that based on the mechanics of the time length of mail going out to when it arrives, it is almost certainly inevitable that someone will move in who is not a citizen.
And then if we follow Ms. Jackie Callenan's comments of that she needs capacity, isn't she double checking all the authenticity and the validity of all those newly registered voters, making sure there's no duplicates, those type of things? Is she doing that and that's what she has said if we pass this? She needs more help to do that.
Yes, Judge, I think really the capacity, I totally agree that the, the capacity of the county staff on the processing of the paper forms that arrive back, there is no chance of a duplicate upfront because we run it against a weekly update of the voter file and on whatever day it's going to go out, it'll be with the election administrator's offices in primatur of this is correct, these people are not currently registered. So there's no, it reduces that problem of duplicate forms and waste.
So let me move on. Larry, let me ask, there's a big issue today of the-